E M and the President of the U N S C, the Foreign Minister of Gabon. Select victims of the Mumbai terror attacks would also be addressing the participants separately. Subsequently, an informal briefing of the C T C will be held on the theme of combating terrorism financing in local and regional contexts. The special meeting of the C T C in Delhi on twenty ninth October will commence with the high level ministerial plenary session in which U N S G's message along with E M and other ministerial participants will address where will address the delegates and discussions during the day will focus on the three separate sub themes of one, countering terrorist exploitation of information and communication technologies. Two, countering terrorism financing online, threats and opportunities related to new payment technologies and fundraising methods. And thirdly, threats posed by terrorists' use of unmanned aircraft systems. Leading experts from U N's operational partners and specialized agencies will also be addressing these panel discussions. It is expected that the outcomes of the U N S C C T C meeting would feed into India's U N S C December presidency opening briefing on global counterterrorism architecture, principles and the way ahead, which is scheduled to be held in New York on fifteenth December, twenty twenty two. The proceedings of the meetings, both Mumbai and New Delhi segments can be viewed live on U N T V where it will be broadcast globally. The concept note and program outlined for these meetings are available on the website of the U N S C C T C. Before I conclude my remarks, I may also add that counterterrorism is a focus area for India in the last quarter of this year. In November, on eighteenth and nineteenth, we will, India will also be hosting the third ministerial conference, No Money for Terror, that will be in New Delhi. I will rest my comments here at this point, Arindam.
Thank you very much, sir. May I now offer the floor to the Chair of C T C and the Department of Representatives of India, Pratirama.
Thank you, Arindam, and good afternoon, everybody. It is my honour indeed to address you today in my capacity as Chair of the Security Council Counterterrorism Committee on the occasion of its upcoming special meeting. I will start with a brief introduction to the committee and what it does before I further elaborate on the special meeting. As you would perhaps know, the Counterterrorism Committee was established by the Security Council in the aftermath of the nine eleven terror attacks through the adoption of Resolution thirteen seventy three of two thousand and one concerning countering terrorism. The committee, which comprises all fifteen members of the Security Council, has been tasked with the monitoring and implementation of Resolution thirteen seventy three and requests countries to implement implement a number of measures intended to enhance their legal and institutional ability to counter terrorist activities at home, in their regions and around the world. The resolution mandates the committee to monitor the full implementation by member states of Resolution thirteen seventy three. To that end, the committee is assisted by its executive directorate, also known as C T E D, that carries out the committee's policy decisions and conducts expert assessments of all one ninety-three member states of the United Nations. In this vein, I am very pleased to be joined by David Sharria and other C T, C T E D colleagues today. So, welcome, David and Jennifer. I saw her somewhere. I think she's there. Dear friends, I also wanted to mention that over the past two decades, member states have made tangible progress in countering terrorism and violent extremism conducive to terrorism. Yet, as we all know, the terrorist threat persists and despite our best efforts has evolved. Terrorism in all its forms and manifestations remains to constitute one of the most serious threats to international peace and security. With the growing prevalence of technology and the rapid rise in digitization, addressing the use of new and emerging technologies for terrorist purposes has become an issue of increasing concern. Mindful therefore of addressing this issue whilst also recognizing the potential of these technologies to increase the effectiveness of counterterrorism efforts, the committee has come together in India to hold its special meeting on countering the use of new and emerging technologies for terrorist purposes. The special meeting is hosted by the Ministry of External Affairs, Government of India, as you all know. On twenty eighth October, the first day of the meeting, the special meeting will kick off with a soft opening session in Mumbai. Secretary West has already mentioned that. In this high level solemn event, the council members, including ministers and high level officials from the United Nations will pay tribute to the victims of terrorism, including the victims of the twenty six eleven Mumbai terror attacks. We will be honoured to hear voices of victims of the two thousand eight Mumbai terror attacks as well as the two thousand sixteen Brussels bombings. The meeting will be followed by an informal session on combating terror financing in the local and regional contexts organized by the Government of India. On day two, that is twenty nine October, the committee will conduct a full day special meeting in New Delhi, which will bring together a wealth of knowledge and real world expertise on the subject matter with participation of member states, relevant operational partners and key stakeholders. Now you'll ask me, what will the discussions focus on? Well, they will focus specifically on the rapid development, growing use by member states and increasing threat of use for terrorist purposes of three significant technologies. Number one, the internet, including social media. Number two, new payment technologies and fundraising methods. And three, unmanned aerial systems, including drones. In this context, the special meeting will serve to reflect on recent developments and the latest evidence-based research regarding the threats posed by the use of these technologies for terrorist purposes as well as global efforts to counter these threats while respecting human rights and fundamental freedoms. It will serve further to explore ways in which states, operational partners and key stakeholders can strengthen their engagement and cooperation in these areas. Let me reiterate once again that terrorism in all its forms and manifestations constitutes one of the most serious threats to international peace and security and that any acts of terrorism are criminal and unjustifiable regardless of their motivations wherever, whenever and by whomsoever committed. The committee is determined to engage with all relevant stakeholders to assist member states in their efforts to address this terrorist threat. I am convinced that our deliberations and discussions during the special meeting will further contribute to enhancing the effectiveness of the overall effort to fight the scourge of terrorism on a global level. Thank you, and I and my colleagues from C T E D and of course Secretary West stand ready to respond to any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Would Dr. Sharria like to say a few words? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair. Let me start by warmly thanking you and your government for your principled leadership of the U N Security Council Counterterrorism Committee. If it's not too late, allow me also to wish you all a happy Diwali. And let me introduce myself. My name indeed is David Sharria and I am a Director at the Counterterrorism Committee Executive Directorate, also known as C T E D. With your permission, let me delve deeper deeper into the rationale behind this timely meeting, which is the outcome of many discussions held between our government, between our office and India and the Government of India and between the Security Council members themselves. The final outcomes of these discussions were just presented by the Chair and it has a fundamental assumption in it. The assumption is that the fundamental assumption is that underpinning this meeting is that new and emerging technologies are a force for good. There be no mistake about it. The internet allows all of us to communicate in ways we could not have imagined a few years ago. It allowed the world economy to continue to function despite all the hurdles brought on us by Covid nineteen. New payment methods allow remittances to be made easily, rapidly, securely and cheaply, also to parts of the world where modern financial systems do not function well or don't even exist. And U A S or unmanned aerial systems help farmers plan harvest better. They allow medicine to be brought to remote areas and humanitarian assistance to be delivered to conflict zones or to areas struck by natural disasters. But it is because these technologies are so powerful, so disruptive and so transformative that they become such a threat when they are misused, abused or weaponized. And indeed, as the Chair has already noted, all these three types of emerging technologies have been used by terrorists and the risk the terrorists will use them is only growing. This alarming risk led the Counterterrorism Committee under the Indian Chair, a leadership, to decide that it is time to act. Over the last few months and in the coming few days, the C T C members represented, as was mentioned already, at a very high level will discuss what the shape of our response will look like. They all agree that whatever our response is, for it to be truly effective, it must be truly global. We are only as strong as our weakest link. The members have therefore agreed to work collaboratively in tackling these issues despite many differences among themselves and despite numerous other pressing global challenges. Because after all, it is all about partnership here. It's partnership among member states, with civil society, international organizations and the private sector. This is also a priority for C T E D, including its valuable partnership with such organizations as the Global Internet Forum on Counterterrorism, whose founding members include Facebook, Microsoft, Twitter and YouTube. Over the coming few days, the members of the committee will answer questions such as how can the risk from these technologies be mitigated while preserving all the benefits they offer to our societies and to our economies? And how can that be achieved while also preserving our values, including in particular freedom of expression, the right to privacy and other fundamental rights? Private sector will be active in this, will be very active and participating in this meeting. They will be asked questions. How can strong enduring partnership be developed between the private and the public sector? And how can we make sure that the private sector takes ownership of the risk emanating from new and emerging technologies without suppressing its innovative power? Civil society will also be participating in the meeting, highlighting how gender dimension play into this area. They will also assist us in making sure that the solutions offered do not lead to the suppression or of dissent or infringement of human rights. The meeting will not conclude these discussions. There is no silver bullet or magic solution to these complex questions. But the meeting is the very first of its kind, which means it will be making history here in India and it will lead to a process involving deep reflection that will continue to guide the international community for many years. Following this gathering, C T E D will invest more efforts to understand the threats that new and emerging technologies may pose and will offer the committee additional policy options. Before wrapping up, let me just stress that we cannot think of a better place to hold this meeting than right here in India. Not just because it is the world's largest democracy, but also because India is a society where a host of cultures and religions coexist and because India is an innovation and technology powerhouse. Sadly, India is also the right place to hold this meeting because of its own long and tragic experience with terrorism, and we all know. And in India, there is no better place to open this series of important discussions than Mumbai. A city not only that has suffered so harshly from terrorism, but also represents a thriving metropolisies consisting of wonderful and very warm people who have demonstrated to the world that the only resilient response is not is the only resilient response to terrorism is to recommit ourselves to our values and to our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sharria. We'll now take a few questions. Please introduce yourself and the organization you represent before us in the question. May I start with you here?
Sir, this is Mukesh Koshik from Dharing Bhaskar. My question is that committee members would be paying tribute to Mumbai terror attacks. Do you think that committee is expected to pass some resolution that the perpetrators of this attack are sitting in Pakistan who should be brought back and be tried here in India? What what committee would decide about it?
Okay, would like to take that one.
There will be a document issued after the meeting. The larger purpose of this unprecedented meeting in India of the Counterterrorism Committee in Mumbai will resonate with the rest of the world because in two thousand and eight, what happened was an attack on what would be the identity of India in the financial and commercial space. A city which the imagery, whether it's the gateway of India, the stock exchange, the Bollywood, the advertising agencies reflects the best of India in terms of its economic development in recent years. The fact that the C T C has agreed to begin its deliberations, even if in a soft opening manner in Mumbai, is a message in itself. The thrust of your question is whether the perpetrators of the two thousand and eight carnage will through this process, the twenty six eleven incident be brought to book through this process. The narrative against counterterrorism is one which faces challenges of its own, both on matters of principle and processes. At the same time, while U N anchors the global efforts against counterterrorism, there are other processes as well, and I would like to draw your attention to the F A T F process. And you will recollect that only last week. Because of that process, Pakistan had to admit and to begin some sort of legal process. It's not very clear where that legal process will culminate, but against two individuals who were directly responsible for the carnage, the twenty six eleven carnage in Mumbai. I, we will not venture to suggest that the general discussions and the consensus building, which we aim to achieve through the deliberations in Mumbai and Delhi, will double down on any specific event. But I think the backdrop, the timing and the whole nature of how this programming has been put together would would suggest that we see such efforts, whether in the U N or outside. All, it's a slow process. It's a slope. It's painstaking. Sometime, double standards are expressed. Sometimes it is politicized. But we will have to live with that. We will have to negotiate that with like-minded countries. So, this is, this is an ongoing, I wouldn't say struggle, but it is something which we are trying to incrementally tighten against forces which use all types of excuses to to resort to medieval or primordial ways of resolving political differences. Thank you.
I'm Siddhant from Vion. Ma'am, my question to you is, as the Chair of the counterterror body, what actions India has taken in terms of dealing with the issue of cross-border terrorism as the Chair? And to you, sir, my question is, will India be raising the issue of politicization of the sanctions regime by countries like China when it comes to putting a hold?
Thank you very much, Siddhant, for your question. And let me just very quickly take you back to January two thousand and twenty two. We have been Chair of the Security Council Counterterrorism Committee since January this year. And as you can imagine, this has been a very intense period of activity leading to this special event that we will be conducting in Delhi and Mumbai. You would also recall that in January two thousand and twenty two itself, the External Affairs Minister of India, Dr. Jaya Shankar, had elaborated upon an eight-point approach as India deals with the scourge of terrorism. I also want to highlight to you that for the first time in seven years, this special meeting is being held outside New York. The last time it was held in Spain, in Madrid, in two thousand and fifteen. So, this is the very first time that a special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee is being held outside New York. And all efforts have been geared towards making this a success. In terms of what you asked, what we have achieved, achieved in inverted commas, I would signal your attention to two particular areas. One, I think it has been highlighted that there is a great need to speak with a united voice and with a common voice as we counter this scourge and menace, which we all agree is one of the most dangerous threats that face humanity today. And the second thing I would like to highlight is the issue of double standards, where we have said that there are no good or no bad terrorists. And we have said before, both the External Affairs Minister and later on the Indian Mission in New York, that those who propagate this distinction have an agenda and those who cover up for them are just as culpable. So, what I am trying to say is that, and as I said in my opening remarks, there can be no justification whatsoever for terrorism regardless of motivation, wherever, whenever and by whomsoever committed. Thank you.
Well, twenty six eleven incident is again a prime example of cross-border terrorism. And the victims were not just Indians, they were foreigners as well. Now, your question on our attempts to designate terrorists or what is called under the U N listing process through the U N S C again runs into a subjectivity and the subjectivity when exercised reflects the fact that the institutional arrangement or decision-making processes in a body like U N seem outdated and acronistic. And India, in various forums, has referred to reforming multilateralism. The fact that objective listing processes, which we have endeavored to initiate with like-minded countries and friends have run into objections on technicalities, on subjectivities which are guided by geostrategic alliances, far removed from the original cause for which the listing was suggested. Until we see an overhaul in the multilateral process, whether in the U N Security Council or in the larger U N system, I think we will continue to face these challenges. And for that reason, at this point, I can only reiterate whether it is a country you refer to or there are other issues on which a technical hold is placed is because the hold is allowed to be placed. The working methods, the rules, regulations reflect a world of nineteen forty five. We have moved on, but sadly, arrangements and processes which should reflect reality of the twenty first century are yet not a work in progress. Thank you.
Smitha Sharma, just a follow-up question to Mr. David. You know, Ambassador Verma there spoke about the difficulties, but you spoke about it's time to act, the weakest links. How do you really act when you have a country of veto holding power like China place on hold resolutions to designate individuals as global terrorists at least four times since June alone this year? Doesn't it defeat the very purpose of such meetings? And to Ambassador Kamboj, is cryptocurrency going to be an area of focus? Because that's an area where India is also thinking about legislating a ban, especially in terms of terror financing. Is that something that's going to be a part of the deliberations?
I'll say a few words about the first question. And I would say the following, and I'll speak with your permission a little bit in abstract. One of the, when we look and I think the issue of new technologies is a wonderful example or the internet, whatever we develop here in India or in any country, any national regime to mitigate any risk emanating from any of those technologies, be it terrorism, organized crime or any other risk, will not be effective unless it's truly global. We know that. You can, with a simple VPN can log in from any country in the world. So, the basic assumption for every kind of, of every question we have is that whatever we agree has to be truly global. And the fact of the matter that in all these areas, there are big differences of views, not just the example you have given, but many other areas. I could give you five different examples of differences among the members. What we in C T E D try to do is to find a common way forward. We're not looking on specific member states concerned because there are concerns for all of them, including India. It has its own concern. We're trying to see how can we look on the issues forward. It means compromise, very often compromise because of constitutional issues, because of geopolitical issues. This is something that member states need to look at and sort out. We cannot do it as professionals. But what we try to do is within the context of what's there to find a common ground and allow to mitigate the risk. We have done it, it's not us, the C T C has done it over three, twenty years with huge successes on many areas that it dealt with. And I hope, and I think that's why we're all coming here, that the atmosphere that India will bring and the alarm that have been ringing in many capitals regarding these new technologies will bring another spirit of cooperation despite many differences. Thank you. To me? Yeah, I think my response was.
Yeah. If you could answer, on the crypto, would you say anything?
Yeah, no, actually, my answer is very short and simple. Yes, the answer to that is a yes. Because one of the focus areas of this meeting is also, as I've mentioned in my opening remarks, new payment technologies and fundraising methods. And there will be, in fact, in Mumbai, there is an informal session immediately after the soft focus, a soft opening with a focus on countering the financing of terror in both a local and global context. And so there will be a focus on misuse misuse of emerging payment methods and online funding methods.
Manish.
My question is, Madam State sponsoring.
Introduce yourself, please, for the record.
My name is Manish Jan, India Rights Network. My question is, you know, states practicing terrorism as an instrument of state policy or sponsoring terrorism continue to use doublespeak, continue to indulge in doublespeak, as pointed out. What kind of leverage Counterterrorism Executive Directorate, Counterterrorism Committee has to call their bluff, you know, to make them really, you know, stop these activities from going on? And the second is, in terms of outcome, what specific steps? You talk about, you know, stopping the abuse of emerging and new technologies. Are there some country-specific proposals? You know, how does this committee work and what kind of solutions we can expect from there?
Thank you. On the first question of state sponsorship of terrorism, the main tool that the committee has is, as was mentioned by the Chair, is visiting countries through us. We are the long arm of the of the of the committee. But eventually, it is the committee that actually visits the country. And we go from one country to another, all one hundred ninety-three countries. And when we go, we ask questions. We ask simple questions. We ask tough questions. And we usually get to the bottom of many of the issues you're addressing in your question. Our delegations are consisted of first seated colleagues, experts in their team. But we also bring with us experts from other bodies, from Interpol, from World Customs Organization, from the I K O, the International Civil Aviation Organization, et cetera, and very often sometimes Fataf or another member of that grouping. With that large of a team. With that large of a team, spending usually a week in a country, we don't leave any issue unquestioned. Sometimes we're happy with the answers, sometimes we're not. We report back to the Security Council Committee, and they usually take up some questions. And some reports are a subject of some very detailed discussions within the committee. So that's on your first question. Second question was addressed to me or to someone else?
Sir, you are not on record, so without the microphone, it won't work out.
No, what I'm asking is that at the end of this meeting, I mean, I'm not trying to preempt the outcome, but essentially, what kind of outcomes, specific outcomes, we can expect in terms of concrete initiatives to thwart the abuse of emerging and new technology?
How about you come to the meeting? Do you have any plans for Saturday?
Yes.
If you can come, there will be wonderful experts coming there, great and brightest minds will think collectively, what can we do? And we will, of course, collate what they bring, analyze and synthesize it. And right now, the CTC is discussing, negotiating what the specific outcome would be. But one thing I hinted in my remarks is that it will be the beginning and not the end. There will not be a solution at the end of the minute, but it will be a process that the CTC and the members will commit to.
If I may add there, the committee will continue to remain seized of the issue even after this meeting. It's an ongoing process.
Anything else you want to add, sir?
Well, yes, of course, one can't preempt the outcome, outcome document, because that would rest on the discussions taking place over 28th and 29th of October. But this is a process. It is not the meeting to end all our troubles, but the fact that it is being held in Mumbai and it sort of, it is a recognition. It is a recognition. You could probably argue that it could have been done earlier, but it is a recognition that this world is not ready to see another 26-11. I think that in itself is a statement, and beyond that, it is a process. I mentioned FATF, I mentioned the ministerial no money for terror. These are separate journeys on the counterterrorism narrative with one common aim. And because this is a terrain which doesn't allow for binaries, there are a lot of gray areas and a lot of maneuvering space for country positions which are removed from the larger objective of eliminating terrorism from this planet. It will be, it will be a slow, painful process, but events like this, the CTC meeting in India, in the 75th year of India's independence, I think it's also part of our larger global footprint, where we are engaging the world not only in terms of climate change, but counterterrorism, G20 presidency. I think the larger sweep of India's engagement could also be appreciated through this event.
Srinjai?
At times now, Srinjai Choudhary, a day will come when it will not be necessary to send 10 terrorists across to Bombay. And that is because with increasing technological advances, UAVs are getting a longer range, and they are getting heavier, and they can carry more payloads. Now, will there be any discussion on technology denial vis-à-vis drones? Because they could well be the next big weapon for terrorists.
Thank you. Anybody would like to take that?
Answer very quickly, the answer is yes. I cannot tell you what will be the outcome of the discussions because member states are discussing. And as we said, it's the beginning of the process. And again, one of the things that India has done to this issue is that it put it through this meeting at the center of Security Council discourse, and not just for that weekend, for years to come, because hopefully, that outcome document will pave the way, again, not for the solution, but for how we're going to approach these problems that are going to remain with us for many years. Thank you.
Here, please.
Hi, my name is Narayanen from German Television. Will there be any special intelligence-sharing arrangement among these countries? If yes, what would be that?
I'm not sure that was very much focus of the counterterrorism committee meeting, which will be, I think, aired live and public, but I will let experts.
I could say very quickly, they say that the best meetings are the meetings that what happens outside the room is more interesting than what happens inside the room.
Okay, I'll take a last question. You had one more? I didn't see you once again. I'll go with Marshus. Quick, we can make it quick, I think we are running out of time.
This is Manas from PTI, President of India. My question is to Mr. David Chariya. Sir, India has been driving the global voice to deal with terrorism, appealing all the world powers to just unite themselves and deal with the issue. So what is the significance of, you know, hosting of this conference, key conference in India, when India has been facing the problem of terrorism, cross-border terrorism, particularly from Pakistan, for last in several decades? Just want to ask you about the significance of, you know, hosting of this key meeting here.
I think Dr. Sharia did mention that, or who did, who's it addressed to? Okay. I think he mentioned in opening remarks, but if you would like to take the floor, I'll leave it to you.
I could say, I think we are grateful to India because these issues have been discussed for a long time among experts. And I think the last question was addressing, experts are concerned, governments are concerned, and until one government said, okay, let's take it to the Security Council and let's leave everything else we do, and as you know, there is a lot happening around the world these days. Let's leave everything else we do and focus on these three questions because these are very big concerns for all of us. I think that's leadership.
Thank you. Last question there.
Kalul from the Hindu. I just want to know, given the importance of Afghanistan in terms of terminals as a source of terrorism and also narcotics, how would you deal with it, especially since Taliban is in power in Afghanistan? I mean, what are the concerns that may come up in the meeting about Afghanistan?
Well, I would, I mean, I am not in a position to sort of second-guess what will be discussed, but in the general expectations, I think regions which have been reasons for concern in terms of destabilizing the neighborhood or the region, or have had a history, and you don't have to look far for that, will invariably, in some form or the other, be part of the discussions.
No, I just wanted to clarify very quickly that this special meeting is not focused on any particular country. It is more global in nature, and we have already identified and elaborated upon the three themes that will be the focus of discussions. And the whole idea is to strengthen engagement and cooperation with each other with a specific focus on the themes of the conference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me take this opportunity to thank our permanent representative and chair of CTC, Madam Ruchika Kamboj, as well as to Secretary West, Shantanu Verma, as well as to Dr. David Sharia, head of the Branch Director of the SITED, and to Prakash Gupta, Joint Secretary UNP, also to my colleagues from the media and our guests and friends from the United Nations system and SITED who are here today. Thank you for joining us for special briefing. We will continue to bring you, hopefully, live and as well as on a real-time basis, the developments that are coming up over the next two days, starting from Friday and Saturday. So please stay tuned to our channel. Thank you.